There's no volume.
There's no volume.
Figured out.
Sorry about that, guys. Kyle, I know you're you're on the road, so we'll skip you this week. That's all right?
Yeah, that's fine. I can hear you now.
Okay. All right, all right, we're on to modification or approval of the agenda. How's it look, guys?
Looks good. If there's nothing to add, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion on that? Move to a vote.
Yes, yes.
The motion carries. Old business. Liz, good having you here.
Good being here. Good evening, everyone. I'll try to be kind of quick. Looks like we have a quick agenda. Couple of follow up items. I'm sure Josh will follow up as well. I see he's here, but Josh and I did have an opportunity to meet. I think it was early last week. My memory is bad. It was early last week. We had to talk about Pine Ridge. I understand that Josh is in communication with Pine Ridge. They will be proposing to us a development agreement consistent with the city's needs and interests. We kind of proposed doing it in that manner to defray the expense of me drafting at Whole Cloth. That's their project. We have a handful of expectations which we think are in the city's interest, and so I will await that and give it a gander once they get it to me. I also conversed with Brett late last week. My weeks are running together. We did take the time to pop the hood on the Kohlberg matter. I think we made some good progress. We kind of expect that may be a matter that comes up on a maybe a special meeting agenda or the next commission meeting. We do have a running draft of the proposed purchase agreement, which would take care of the right of way. There are some details because it was an unrecorded plat that we may need to work out with regard to descriptions and whatnot. So, you know, Brett's doing a good job communicating with Brian about that, and we'll follow up as needed, but we're making some progress there. I will also thank Josh Reiner for confirming the KSI costs, and I'll defer to Wendy to schedule that with Gavin and Monty for further communications about the prospective de-annexation. Sounds like the township consented. I think we are waiting for written confirmation of that still. But I mean, I don't have doubt that we'll receive it, and now we have the cost, so I think we'll be ready to move along and at least get that conversation scheduled. I also do want to note that Wendy was very much ahead of the ball on a public comment policy. I don't know if the audience is aware, but there was a bill in the North Dakota Legislature which essentially requires a written policy with regard to public comment at open meetings. Tioga tipped my hat to the city actually was more or less compliant with the confines of that bill. Just our policy wasn't reduced to writing. But all other aspects of the of the nature of our public discussions have actually been adopted by the city for some time, so go Tioga. You're ahead of the legislature. Finally, I think we hit the point that there's a likelihood. I was aware of that of a special meeting. I know the budget has been, it's quite an undertaking. Wendy's doing a good job, particularly only having entered that office a matter of months ago, so that's a huge task, and I hear she's doing quite well. And finally, I see that there is some discussion from the airport board on the agenda this evening. I know there's been some dialogue online. I decided to make myself present because I prefer to have discussions in person with those who have them, rather than trying to respond to to commentary in which I'm not included if it's a matter of public interest, and I certainly think the goings on of a municipal airport are a matter of public business, so I'll stand by for that.
Guys, questions for Liz? All right, moving on to you, Josh.
Thank you much. So, few items for this evening. The emergency action plan, there were a few type typographical errors. We had that correct from some discussions, and it sounds like we're gonna kind of stick with the remainder of it. If there are, you know, changes to contacts and whatnot in the future, you know, we can certainly assist with that, or if we we can give the city the Word doc, and you guys will have PDFs and hard copies of this for future updates if need be on anything. So with that, I guess I would look for approval of the emergency action.
Got one question on it.
Yes.
Can we have an editable version?
Yeah, yep. I'll I'll give you a Word doc.
Okay, because it's gonna be a revolving door on updating it. My term ends in a couple, three years. Kirk's gonna retire someday. People quit. I just want to be able to update it ourselves and not pay you to do it, right?
Yep, nope, and we can we can assist with it if need be, but we'll I'll get the when we package up the final PDF, I'll send a Word doc.
Looks good. Looks good.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency action plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the emergency action plan provided by Moore Engineering. Any discussion on that? Yeah, move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries?
Yes.
Hey, next item, the recreational trail project. We have the final contractor's application for payment on that project. Kind of for seed growth to start out there, which has kind of evolved over over the summer here, so. With that, their request for payment is one hundred two thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars and nineteen cents. Going back to, I guess, the end of last year with their previous contractor's application for payment, there was they were forty five days beyond completion at a thousand dollars a day, and at that time, tuition withheld that payment, so. Leave it. Give it up to the board to decide on that.
What was the delay? The the all in forty five day delay? It's weather?
They they got a late start primarily. I mean, once they got here, they moved moved quick, definitely, but they just got got started.
And you've had that dialogue with them that this potentially would be?
He's aware, wasn't overly thrilled. I mean, after the last last application for payment, you know, just mentioned the liquidated damages, and I said, well, you are forty five beyond completion, and now further discussions with the commission if we'd like. Or that doesn't enough jump for joy, of course, but definitely.
Yeah, but I mean, these guys know that upfront. If you don't finish on schedule, they know it's in the contract, right?
Yep.
It shouldn't be a surprise. It should encourage some hustle. What do you guys think?
We wait and see what they say about the liquidated damages or?
Well, this is the final.
This is the final one.
Close out the payment.
They were a thousand a day?
Yeah.
So that six figure number on paper, that includes the forty five thousand deduction?
Correct. If you withhold that, it would go down to fifty seven nine ninety six nineteen.
Say that number one more time, please.
With withholding the forty five thousand.
Yes.
Fifty seven thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars and nineteen cents.
Do you think satisfied with it?
Well, I like the smaller number. We've talked all over the place about accountability, and it seems like every project pops up with this liquidated damage thing. We have to be consistent across the board.
I'll make a motion to approve Vekto Pavings payout number four for the for the smaller amount, fifty thou- fifty seven thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars and nineteen cents.
And I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve Vekto's foot payout number was a?
Four.
Pay up number four, and the amount of fifty seven thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars and nineteen cents. That encompasses the liquidated damages.
Yep.
Any discussion on that? Okay, move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Kyle. I'll pause a little bit.
And then on that project, the correction period, or one year correction period walkthrough will expire in November, so we'll look to schedule the kind of final final walkthrough on that project in September. Winter sets upon us.
I haven't been out there and like walked in because I'm lazy. Have you? Like, how does it look? Is it holding up?
Yeah.
Is anybody in here taking a trip on the trail?
It's hard to say, but it's.
Yes, holding up good. Okay.
Hey, the next, I guess, last item I have is the softball field relocation. So shortly shortly after the last commission meeting, we did get the okay to submit the, I guess, send out the resident notification letters. Those were sent out, and we provided notice Friday to FEMA, I guess, the record of of those being sent out, so. That's where that stands, and hopefully shortly here they'll give us the okay to form construction.
So after the letters are sent out, how long do they normally wait before they thumbs up or thumbs down?
It's 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 not a thumbs down at all. I mean, it's just once they approve it. I mean, there's no question at this point whether they're gonna approve it. It's just they have to review the documentation and at that point, this it'll be okay, but it it should be a couple of weeks.
No matter what, I get to build a field where it's supposed to go.
What's that?
No matter what, we get to build a field where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, yeah, there's no no question back at this point, so, yep. And that is all I have. If there's any questions, group?
Good. Thanks for the good news.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to new business. Number three, that's that public comment policy that Liz was referring to. It was a state bill that we need to adopt a public public comment policy. Abby put one together that, I mean, it looks great. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look through it. It's rather lengthy, and I could read it all to you, but essentially what it is is we have to add a public comment agenda item, and that would be the first non-procedural agenda item at all regular meetings of the city commission. Which is great, because we typically ask anyway if anybody has anything to add, and everybody kind of gets shy, but this would open the door to bring people if something's on their mind. I like it, like.
I have a question. So that's the very first thing before old business? Is that what you're saying? Public commenter would be at the end of the agenda?
It would be, I'm assuming it's at the end of the agenda because it wouldn't be procedural, right?
Yeah, it's it. You can actually put them at the beginning or the end under that state bill, but we've always done it at the end, and that would be consistent with the manner in which the board has approached that. So it's actually up to you. It can appear at at either end, as I understand the bill.
So I know what you're asking. It could get really long, and your night could get super long before it even got started, right? But ours is capped at thirty minutes, so each person would have three minutes. I suppose we'll get a sand clock or something timing it, but a thirty minute cap is what we're putting on.
One other. So when the city, if the city adopts this, will it go under all boards for the city then, including the airport authority?
Well, you're a separate board with your own authority. And so it would be incumbent on each board of their own authority to do so. I mean, the planning and zoning board is really the only board that I can think of that's under our direct, and I suppose the Tioga Fund Board to the degree that that's relevant. I haven't reviewed it for for subboards. But planning and zoning, I suppose, would be the first board I could think of where the city might direct that. It's inclusion. Otherwise, it's up to the airports and independent boards to determine whether they wish to comply with state law or not. That's their call.
I'd just do it.
Yeah, if you would. Would you forward that?
Yeah.
To us, so that we can adopt that at our next meeting?
I mean, it's it's really well put together, so I mean, it could be a copy paste thing for you guys. That way we're consistent.
Right.
Right. We'll need a motion to adopt the public comment policy.
Not good. Just wording it like that, just, yeah, make a motion to adopt a public comment policy.
I'll second that.
Hey, we got a motion and a second to adopt the public comment policy that we drafted. We will move to vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. He was quick that time. All right, Tioga Airport, Jeffrey Mole.
All right, so this is gonna be a little lengthy because we're gonna go back to July eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Builds upon everything here. So at our board meeting on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty four, under the Tioga Airport Authority agreements, new contracts, discussion was held about the Tioga Airport Authority taking fuel farm back from the Tioga Aero Center. It was agreed by the board that it would help. It was agreed upon by the board that it would help for Tioga Airport Authority to get grants to relocate the fuel farm. Board discussed how to move forward with buying the on hand fuel from TAC and preparing a new agreement to propose to TAC. Curtis made a motion for the Tioga Airport Authority to take fuel farm back from TAC and offer TAC an option to buy fuel at a negotiated price. Dean Hanson had seconded. Motion passed. All approved. Okay? So we'll fast forward to the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty four meeting. Travis Chanis, on behalf of TAC, handed out a letter submitted by Kathleen Nesset regarding the fuel farm stating that the Tioga Airport Authority owns the fuel farm, and the fuel doesn't need to be owned by the Tioga Airport Authority. Jeff stated that it wasn't that we couldn't apply for the grant. It is that the Tioga Airport Authority would have a very low chance of getting it. Jeff and Travis had discussion around the letter, what it contained. Basically, they're asking to table the fuel farm takeover by TA to give TAC more time to get more information. Discuss discussion about the discounted fuel for TAC or allowing TAC to purchase fuel, and the Tioga Airport Authority would store it in the new fuel farms so TAC could purchase it, fuel at their own discretion. Jeff will call Kyle Wanner tomorrow morning and make sure that we have a special meeting and maybe have a special meeting. Paul Wyrock made a motion to extend the deadline until the special meeting for Tioga Airport Authority taking over the fuel farm from TAC. Curtis Van De Sant seconds. Discussion. Wayne had said that it was a big interruption to the board that had already voted, and that motion passed. Okay, now for the special meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty four. Now, I sent this with your guys's oh, wait, I'm gonna get a little ahead of myself. Okay, so we had a special meeting on the Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty four at six oh one PM. The Tioga Fuel Farm Maintenance Contract. Paul made spoke with Kyle, which is Kyle Wanner, and the fuel farm goal is to eventually pay for itself. Curtis spoke about the TAC maintenance. We are not getting a real good value due to the pace of work, possibly hiring a Tioga Airport Authority employee with better work efficiency. Jeff had three people lined up for that. It is the understanding of the board that TAC would give up the fuel inventory on August thirty first, and Tioga Airport Authority would take over on the first of September. Curtis makes a motion to discontinue the use of TAC maintenance so that Tioga Airport Authority can hire their own to keep up the grounds. No motions, no second motion failed. Then Curtis had made a motion to discontinue the TAC maintenance agreement with a cutoff date of September thirtieth. Motion had passed. Okay? Moving forward, now this is where I forwarded this information to your guys' packets. So on August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four at nine twenty one AM, Veronica Peterson, Deputy Auditor for the City of Tioga, reached out to me and Patricia at our emails, and it states, I received a record request for the Tioga Airport Authority. See attached. I did inform them that they could take the record request to the airport. Jeannie requested the information be sent to the city and the city to contact her with the documents once we've received them from the airport. Thank you. That was at nine twenty one. Yep.
Who's Jeannie?
I don't know.
Okay.
I have no clue.
Neither.
So at nine fifty nine AM, I replied with the Tioga Airport Agenda for the special meeting of eight nineteen twenty twenty four. And at ten o'clock in the morning, one minute later, I responded with the authority minutes from eight nineteen twenty twenty four. At the same day, I don't exactly know when the time was of this this page here. It was on Facebook from Tioga Aero Center. In the middle of paragraph, effective immediately, August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, all Tioga Aero Center operations at D sixty are suspended. Okay? Now, that was on the twenty twenty ninth. Okay, now we go back to or forward to September nineteenth, the following meeting of the next month. Tioga Airport Maintenance Agreements. Jeff wants to redo the motion. Paul brought it up that if you had an illegal meeting and wasn't posted posted properly, that we would have to redo it, and that we may it may be best to redo the motion. Curtis makes a motion to discontinue the use of TAC due to the possible possible confusion from the previous special meeting. Dean seconds. Motion passed. Okay, so now, since that time, I'm gonna move up to after that letter. So the information that was requested provided in the manner that's specified in the request from the city. Tioga Airport Authority is unaware of what the city did with that information after Tioga Airport Authority fulfilled that request as direct. So fast forward to the Attorney General Letter dated twelve seventeen of two thousand twenty four. We received a letter from the Attorney General with sixteen questions about special meeting held on eight nineteen of twenty twenty four. I contacted the Attorney General's Office and clarified some of the questions and how to respond via email correctly. So after I entered up those sixteen questions, I responded back to the Attorney General. Once we got the opinion, the Attorney General opinion dated six ten of twenty twenty five. Received that letter dated six ten twenty twenty five on six seventeen of twenty twenty five from the North Dakota Attorney General to give minutes and agenda for said meeting to anyone in the public and Kathleen Nesset free of charge. Tioga Airport Authority reached out to Kathleen Nesset at her office and gave and had given an email to send the information to. Information was sent via email from the admin at tiogaairportnd.com account from the bookkeeper. Tioga Airport Authority did not post the meeting correctly and failed to understand the exact nature of how and where to place the meeting notifications. Tioga Airport Authority accepts full responsibility. I myself placed the meeting notification at the meeting location, but did not notify the paper or to contact the city auditor properly. On the opinion of the Attorney General, Tioga Airport Authority being at fault is is failing to notify notify properly. Tioga Airport Authority has reviewed the meeting laws and requirements, educating ourselves on proper procedure for the future. Tioga Airport Authority is taking these concerns seriously, is working diligently to provide more transparency for the public to ensure the value of the opinions for all community members. And we will do our best to help serve the public to the best of our abilities. Tioga Airport Authority is working on the following corrections to these actions. We are doing the same thing as the city here with Microsoft Team. Board meetings are broadcast through Microsoft Teams, just like the city, to help the public be more involved at the airport. Meetings are correctly posted in a timely manner on the city webpage, city bulletin board, airport terminal, and airport Facebook page. Any requests that should be sent to the Tioga admin or admin at tiogaairportnd.com or through the city, and the airport will respond directly, and that's where I'd like to talk to you guys about. I would request a motion from the city to if if you guys want to handle the record records request, so we don't have this problem in the future, either you guys handle it so that it's there's no gray area, or if you want, if there's records request to the airport, send it to us directly, and then we will respond directly to the said individual. I think that would clear up this problem with the email that went out on the twenty ninth, and didn't didn't get, obviously, didn't get to where it was supposed to go.
Yeah, I think that would help out a ton. Just if somebody wants airport records, go straight to the airport. You can fire it right back.
Yes, absolutely. It would clear up any gray areas. It would alleviate the the gals up front, so they don't have to deal with records request for the city of Tioga. It just comes straight to the airport. We have all the records out at the airport already, so you guys would basically be doing the same thing, reaching out to us, and it would get lost in the clutter, just like, obviously, this must have happened on the twenty ninth.
It'd be nice to have like a monthly download over to us, so we have it too in case you're on vacation or your admin's on vacation or or whatever, to where if they can't get a hold of you, they can get a hold of us, and we can provide it at your discretion.
Right, I mean. Yeah, because all the records are there at the terminal. So, I mean, it would be have to be somebody from the the board that has access to that information, but yeah. That would clear up a lot of the gray area so that we don't have this problem going forward again. I guess that's what I would request is a moment in that way. Either the city handles it, and then I can respond to that said individual directly, or the airport handles it purely ourselves.
I don't think the city has the authority to supersede state law for an open records request. The entity who possesses the records and the entity to whom the records are or from whom the records are requested is the entity under statute that has to deliver them. So I think if you guys want to mutually decide that there's a secondary set of records or basic records that are stowed within the city to cover exigencies where a person is just looking for meeting minutes or agendas, that's fine, but even if they give you a motion to say we can fill your request, they can't actually do that because they're not the makers of the records, and they can't certify that that's a complete record because they're not the entity that generates those records. Because they're not the entity that generates those records. So I think it's a good conversation to have, but I would not recommend that the board engage in a motion because. I mean, I suppose one component of the motion could track with the statute, but if they go the other direction, they're in violation of state law. Because the state law doesn't allow them to usurp your records obligations.
But that would circumvent this problem. Cause I mean, it's in black and white. I've got the receipts. I mean, I sent the records request to the city. And we've got, we got the black eye from the Attorney General for that.
Well, you got the black eye because you had a special meeting. So I I want to be clear, if we're going to be transparent. About what the the nature of the controversy from the citizens. I mean, I'm trying to be fair to you, Jeff. That was a trifold. Inquiry that landed with me. One concern was unnoticed special meetings. The A G's opinion addressed that. The city had nothing to do with an unnoticed special meeting. That was not our thing. That black guy, that's yours and that's fine. People have un- unnoticed meetings that happens.
I fully accept the 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 black eye on report on on the on the uh, uh, notice.
The other component doesn't sound like it was addressed in the A G's opinion, actually. That's that's an open records issue that dealt with a private citizen request. Why that went to Veronica, I don't know, but you're and I don't know. I mean, I I'm a. I don't want to get into that can of worms. I believe you.
Okay, well, I'm just saying it was it was requested genie requested this information to be sent to the city. And the city to contact her with the documents once we receive from the airport.
And then Veronica forwarded that to the airport board, right?
No, this was her email. This is the deputy auditor. Email.
So we don't have the deputies emails. I mean, I don't want to go down that can of worms, but.
No, but I'm just saying that is that is the email from Veronica Peterson at that time.
So the city got a records request for the airport. Veronica reached out to the airport, the airport sent it back to Veronica and it. Sounds like it just didn't make it back to the person.
But Veronica tendered it to the airport and said, hey, there's somebody requesting records.
Yes.
Okay, and I sent it back to him as directed there.
Sure, a- and we can read that and I I'm not fault me or their Jeff, but I don't want to create unnecessary process. If the city tells a citizen, we don't possess those records, you gotta go ask for them from the airport. Or if they have a duplicate sentence, say we have the minutes and the agendas, we can provide you that, but the balance of any records, you gotta get those for the airport. I mean, I think that's perfectly fine. Um, but I don't think that's a black eye issue and and the A G's opinion didn't speak to that issue, did it? It only spoke, oh, it did. It spoke to a failed open records.
Yes.
Okay, and then, well, fair enough. Sounds like you guys are discussing that process. The other thing that your discussion didn't touch. Which I know has been a sore spot in the community because that came up well before that article got published. Was the issue of appearances of impropriety. And assumption of contracts by members of the board. And I think it's fair to say that. Historically, the city, to the degree it's had the authority, we've had to grapple with some real conflicts of interest. And I will tell you that. The conversations that I've had with community members, the ones that have knocked on my door personally to ask me if that's legit. Are people who are more concerned about contracts occurring with board members. That appear to be unbid for maintenance contracts or service contracts that were not done years ago. And you can speak your piece. I'm not blaming you. I'm just being straight with you. That's a legitimate question that citizens legitimately ask. And it's not favorable to the airport when it's asked. Which was why that was raised on my account at the last meeting.
Okay, I'll get to that point. So up until last fall. Every board member that did work out there was ten ninety nine. They were not W two. I agree. That's why we changed it. They were all ten ninety nine. You can ask every board member.
I'm not talking about the board members. I'm talking about the contractors. I'm told that basin pipeline, I'll be very frank. I hate to do that in a room. But I'm told that a company in which you're a principal is doing work without a contract. For the airport and ordinarily that would be bid. And that is a huge source of inflammation with the public because of course, if Mr. Renitz, for example. Came here and said, I'm gonna do all the snowplow work for the city and we didn't bid it out and it happened to be his company. Snowplow mania, whatever it is, and it was never bid. And the public became aware that Renitz was a principal in that company who had a no bid contract to do service work for the city, they'd be flippant. And I would call him out. Nobody's talking about ten ninety nine in board members or whether they're employees. We're talking about service contracts. That the community is concerned that a principal and president of the airport board is is mixing and without public bidding.
My, as a ten ninety nine, I. So I go from ten ninety nine with basin pipeline. Okay, that's how any work that I've done out there along with all the former board members, I know you keep saying basin pipeline. I'm gonna ten ninety nine myself personally, again, instead of doing just snow removal work. I just put it on base in it because I was being ten ninety nine anyway. I paid the insurance or the the taxes on the money from the said airport at thirty dollars an hour. That's the agreed rate for board members. I'm not doing it through a basin. I'm doing it as a board member. It's been properly voted on and approved by the board. That we all get thirty dollars an hour to do any maintenance work on the field. Period. That's that's anybody. If they get ten ninety nine, which they were up until late last fall. This was done, we corrected it last fall. It was brought to my attention that it don't look that good with basin pipeline. So I went back and I W two myself through the board. All the board approves every single payment. It's double sign from each member of the public. I don't get to pay myself. They pay, they approve it at every board meeting with our with our records and our bill payments. It's reviewed every single month. So.
I think you're missing me. I I understand.
There is no contract with basin pipeline. It was just me as a board member.
Okay, so there's a contract between a board member and and the airport. That doesn't make it better. You're talking about. Trading cups for a tax purpose. That's not what the citizens are concerned about. I guess the larger picture here, Jeff, is that the work that you're doing or basin's doing. Whatever entity is housing it, that you're arguably benefiting from financially as a result of your seat on the airport. Are you bidding that work out? Are you offering it to other entities that don't have a board seat? Or an affiliation with the board to be able to do that work? Nobody cares if you're doing ten ninety nines or W twos. I've never had a citizen say I'm really concerned about the absence of a W two from Jeff. That's not the issue. It's the relationship.
Which is why the Tyoga Airport Authority voted to hire our own employees.
But then it hired its board members as employees?
Yes.
Did it advertise those positions in public?
No.
Well, do you see why the public might be concerned of that arrangement?
No, I don't. The airport has to be opened. It has to stay open in the winter time for runways. We weren't getting that. We were not getting that. I was opening to runways at eight o'clock in the morning. I mean, if if I need to do it for free, I'll do it for free. But that's what the agreed, yeah, through the board, that's how it was agreed. The board members have always been paid prior to me even being on the board.
Well, I I guess what the, I I guess what I would want to know, if I were one of the citizens who would complain to me. Is why doesn't the airport just advertise the position to allow for competitive bidding?
Because it's not a full-time position. It's a part-time position.
Doesn't matter?
Well, if it's under two hundred thousand dollars, to my knowledge, from what I've been told, you don't have to advertise for anything under two hundred thousand dollars.
I I mean, you, I'm not gonna advise you on what your legal obligations are. But I can definitely advise you on what I've heard from the public about the fact. That a longtime contractor was terminated from the airport and then without any public offering. That work went to board members or board members companies. Without giving other members of the public an opportunity to attempt to solicit it, part-time or not, ten ninety nine or not. W two or not, Jeff, the concern there is that a member of the board or his or her companies are benefiting from work. To which the public was not made an offering to secure. That is the public perception. That was expressed as a concern and it's your board.
Oh, I'm just saying, board members have always done work. Always. We continued doing work even as after we had a private citizen company working out there. Board members have always done work out there regardless of who the contractor was out there working. It's just it, all the board members do. If they've got time, Curtis Vandisant, the only one that I know that hasn't been out there in the last three years is Paul Wyrock. That's the only one. Other than that, people have been doing mechanical work. Snow removal, grass mowing, everything that needs to maintain that airport.
At expense, at public expense, without offering those public funds to other competitors within the community. Who might like to bid on those contracts.
And if they want to put in an R F Q, they sure can, but we haven't advertised it because we didn't, we have not seen the need for it.
Well, the community's heard it from the horse's mouth here. That's their judgment to make, not my Brett. Go ahead. Sorry. See, you're trying to interject.
No, I I do want to get back to this Attorney General opinion too, but that's. The complaint that I hear the most is. We have appointed officials funding their personal businesses which pad their personal pockets. And whether it's at a discount or not. Some people think that that's money that you just didn't have before. And I know from like July, July to what January, basin was paid out like over thirty thousand dollars, right? That's not just.
From what, January to July?
July to January.
No.
Well, the records request that I got, it was based on pipeline.
Did you have some of the the payments back?
It was an Excel sheet, a very generic Excel sheet, and it just says basin pipeline. You add the tallies, it's over thirty grand.
So when I pull.
As far as I know, I was the only person that knew that and I apologize for having to bring it up.
Oh, no, you're fine. You're fine. I mean. The building was up on Steve Jensen's property. It sat there for three years. It'd been sitting up there, hadn't moved. Airport already had it owned. That's why the airport decided to bring the building down here to put it up.
No, it was staggered across those months.
I understand that, but some of the bigger, the bigger monetary values. But if the city doesn't want airport personnel to do any work out there, we'll bring it to the next board meeting. I don't have a problem with it. This is just something that has continued.
You did, right?
Excuse me?
I think you did, right? You guys made a motion to hire a part-time.
Yes.
Worker, right?
But if you don't want any board members to do any work. For monetary.
That's what we're saying, Jeff. We're not, all these board members do work. Everybody who works.
No, I understand that.
All town, we're not suggesting you shouldn't do work. What we're suggesting is that. That the public at large should have no less or no greater opportunity to do work that's being paid on the public dime. The public who funds, the public offers, they usually want to be able to bid, just like a board member. It was an appearance of unfairness. By virtue of your position on that board, the public perceived that you were. As Brett said, deriving a benefit or some personal benefit from that position because that position was not being offered to the larger public. That was the complaint. I'm not saying whether it's true or not. Or if that was your motivation or not, but that was the nature of the public complaint. But if you've corrected that and you've hired someone to do that work, perhaps it's been corrected.
So.
I have a question.
Yep.
So. I also heard that there is a few dirt projects that took place out there.
In the culverts?
I don't know, but I didn't get details, but there are like two or three, like. Not exactly high scale, but dirt projects nonetheless. So, um, who did those?
I did.
You personally?
For the board, yes, as a board member. We put in the culverts last year. There's a safety issue on the on the west end of the new TA. There's a great big hole in there. I don't know why the engineers let that go. We put, as a board, we decided to put culverts in there to alleviate that problem for snow catching and any airplanes happen to runoff inside there. We added the culverts through, extended the one on the uh, on the west side of Paul Wyrock's anger. And also created a parking lot on the north side of the of the terminal.
Okay.
That's what it was.
Okay.
So we used. Construction equipment that the airport owns. Hand tools that came out of my pickup. That's where that came from.
What what kind of equipment did you use to do it?
The payload.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no dirt work. It was just getting the dirt on top.
Well, see, that's why I, that's why I ask, because I I'm wondering about that too, because.
The only, the only dirt projects that we've really done is those those projects there with the culverts. I dug out the um, culverts there alongside the road because we were having backup issues alongside the drainage road for the main road. Um, because they were starting to get filled up with dirt and. The other one was we sold. We sold topsoil. We had a stockpile of topsoil that we sold as an airport.
Because I was wondering if those dirt projects were like what what is, what of invoice and what is that for? The invoices he was speaking about.
The invoices.
The thirty grand that Brett raised is being filled via basin pipeline between July and January. What was that for?
Was that for those those dirt projects or what? What is that for?
That's for work that I was doing as a board member. I can show you guys. If you guys want the requests, I've got them because. Mister Norgard, he requested it just not too long ago. I can give you copies. It's sitting on my desk.
Well, can you just tell us?
So that's what it is?
Excuse me?
Then, so the thirty grand is just you doing work then or? That was.
Mowing grass, things of that nature. The only other repayments was bringing down that building from Steve Jensen's pasture. And I think going down and getting the tool cap from mine. Other than that, in all airport.
What I'm getting at was that was half a year last year. I'm assuming that number's gone up.
I don't think so.
No.
I would, I would, well, one, it's not going through basin pipeline. It hasn't for the last four months. So it's be as a board member, but if that's a problem. We, I mean, we already hired one person. We've got a second one that's gonna be hired.
Well, that should fix itself then, right?
I would assume so.
So anyway, back to the Attorney General's opinion. He wrote this. Ten?
Yeah.
June tenth?
June tenth.
And you sent those records last year in August, end of August.
I sent those records to the city on August twenty nine.
Right.
I got the letter dated twelve seventeen of twenty four, with sixteen questions that I replied back. I think it was January second. From the questions that the Attorney General sent.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is I can't see. What the records request was. It must have been an attachment. She said, see attached. So she must have sent you what the records request was.
Yeah.
And you replied with.
Two attachments.
Special meeting agenda. And the meeting minutes.
Correct.
So I'm wondering, was there more to that records request which made him think that it wasn't satisfied? Was there financials, bills? Fuel testing records, all that other stuff? That wasn't included with what you sent, so they're saying, hey, we didn't get our records, hence why he penned the letter.
Yeah, I I got, I sent off what I thought I seen on the on the, I'd have to go back and look at that request. But I'm just going by, excuse me?
Can we verify that? Like, maybe there wasn't, or maybe there was stuff missed and that's what his.
I'll look at it tomorrow and I'll send it to you.
Because I can't see that.
No.
I can see what he sent. I can't see what was requested.
So the requestor requested, you mean?
Right, yeah. So if they asked for five different things, you gave two. They said, hey, we still haven't got our records. Is that why this is item number two on his opinion? If he satisfied it, I don't know why he has it on there. There's, we're missing something.
Like I said, I don't know if it went through, if it got passed through or not. I have no idea. Like I said, once I sent it to the city. I don't know what happened.
So it was lack of information or misinformation, one of the two, it's gotta be.
Yes. I don't know. Like I said, I I'm I'm one hundred percent at fault for the. I I feel like I I satisfied that record request. I am at fault for not notifying the paper. I did not know the law correctly, one hundred percent. I did not know that. I thought it would, when you contact the paper to notify about a special meeting, I thought it had to run in the paper. So on that Saturday, um, I was, the seventeenth, I I think is what it was at three o'clock, three forty. I knew it wasn't gonna make the deadline to run in the paper, so I didn't do that. I misspelled something in city app. Or auditor at City of Tyoga. I am completely at fault of that. I admit that. I think you guys were at the meeting. You guys, I mean, I've, I've not made any bashful comments about that. I was one hundred percent at fault. And I have done thing, I've reviewed the law. I will not make that mistake again if, you know, if I'm gonna be out there, but. I made a simple mistake, honest to God. And I, you know, I've been dealing with this, trying to get this stuff figured out, obviously. It's a problem that I've done work out to airport. I'm trying to keep that airport going good. And you know, if the public can feel, you know, they can forgive me for, you know, doing that. Great, but I I don't. Great, but I, I don't know, I'm just doing what I can for, for the Tyoka Airport, that's it. And I sure am not enriching myself by working thirty dollar, thirty dollars an hour getting taxed on it. You know, to make a living at work in a Tyoka Airport.
I get that.
You know, so. When I get lifeline coming in behind me, cleaning runways at eight o'clock in the morning, so that people could get transferred out. It's kinda worth it, to me, anyway.
I was crawling up in the ceiling in here trying to get the whole microphone situation figured out because it always used to be really muffled. And uh, people are like, well, why didn't you charge for that? Like, what, two dollars? Like, it was something I wanted to do to help city hall out. Not only that, but it would be two dollars I didn't have before, which is gonna irritate people, right?
And there's one other thing I wanna say about that. For the last two years, I, I would go to CIP meetings. I, I went to the North Dakota Fly Conference this year in behalf of the airport, I don't charge for things that I'm supposed to do as a board member. I sat out at the airport today, we have a microcell project, a million, a one point one million dollar project out there. I'm not gonna charge to direct these people, we have a fuel farm move, moving at the same exact time, we've got five different contractors out there. I'm not charging the airport for that, the only thing I charge the airport for is that manual labor. The mowing of the grass, the cleaning of the runways, just like everybody else, that's it, that's all I did. If I made a mistake by putting my invoices under basin pipeline, I own that too, I mean, hundred percent, I'm, I didn't mean. To make it look like I'm trying to not. To screw people out of money, that's the last thing I wanted to do. I came out to the airport to do my best for the airport, Liz, you were here when I got appointed, I said, I'm gonna do the best I can for the airport, I sat there, I've signed. An oath of office, right here at city hall, and that's what I've done, I've done everything I can for the betterment of the Tyoka Airport. You know, there's been a lot of hard decisions, a lot of hard decisions that we've made out there as a board. It's. It sure as heck hasn't made me any more friends. But in regards to the airport, it's made the airport better where we're at right now. I can't help it, that's where, that's, I'm supposed to take the hits, I'll take the hits. Just doing everything I can.
Oh, and that was kinda the gist of what Liz was saying at the commission meeting addressing the, the rumors circulating around the airport. And the image that's tarnished was, you know, communicating what you're doing to work on this stuff and you're doing it right now, right?
And I encourage anybody to reach out to the airport, I have not had one person ask me. In regards to anything about that Guardian. Uh, I think it's a Williston Guardian article, I've not had one person reach out to me, not one. And ask me about it.
Cleaning up the image and reducing the drama is just gonna be huge, I mean, we had our plate full of drama our first year and it, it was tough.
And at the airport, I would like to, I, I mean, there's tenants out there right now, I'd like to say that. We don't have holler and screaming up to meetings. It's on Microsoft Teams, I mean, it's very, very well ran, you guys were there, I mean, there's no hopping and screaming and hollering, you know? I don't know what else I can do. To try to, you know, make our image, I, I work, I mean, I read the Attorney General, I've taken full responsibility, I'm not. Shying away from the responsibility that I have screwed up, I, I, I did, I, one thousand percent. I have not done it, I, I've encouraged the public every time I've came up here to attend our meetings. Every single time, the third Thursday of the month, at seven o'clock, at the Tyoka Terminal, come out, look at it, the airport looks like a golf course. Not as good as our world golf course right now cuz we've got the water system fixed, but it looks pretty good. And it'll look really good in another month with that brand new microcell on there and that fuel farm moving down to the main ramp. With a brand new twelve thousand gallon hundred low lead tank. So. We're doing our best.
For what it's worth, Jeff, I didn't hear any complaints from the public about the fact that you misnoticed a meeting. I mean, I'm certainly aware that that was addressed in the AG's opinion, the larger concern that I heard public comment on was the issue of a conflict of interest and personal gain. Through position, um, I might just add, because I don't wanna belabor the point, but you asked what you might do, usually the way you. Cure distrust on the part of the public is to engage in absolute transparency and even this conversation, while I think very helpful. In the public's interest, hasn't really dissolved, it hasn't set forth any particulars. So, in fact, I would argue if I weren't following this saga and I was just generally talking about it at the coffee shop, I might be a little more confused. Because it sounds like now we've got Jeff as an, a paid person to avoid basin being paid, so. I would tactfully suggest, I'm not giving you legal advice, but as a practical matter, maybe the airport should just produce. A record by way of invoice and payment of everything they've paid to you and basin. That would put the public on notice of what you've received, the manner in which you've received it, how those arrangements. Were made, and the work that was rendered, and then they can formulate their own opinions about whether that was appropriate or not. But they can't really do that until that information is made available to them.
It's tough to stress and, and I wanna go back to that misinformation thing. Why are you here tonight?
Why here? To try to clear the reputation of the Tyoka Airport Authority.
And you, you called to get put on the agenda, right? We didn't, we didn't put you on the agenda.
Nope, I called, put myself on it, yeah.
Yeah. So, my weekend got a little wild because I don't have Facebook, thank goodness I don't, cuz I probably would have had a little lapse in maturity as well. He said, I encourage the public to attend for this meeting as city commissioners will be asked to remove me from the Tyoka Airport Authority. Which made it look like we asked you to show up, so we could.
That's getting to my last point, that was getting to my last. You guys wanna keep me on at the Airport Authority, that's the only thing that I would. I would ask, is if you guys wanna make a motion to either keep me or remove me as the Airport, uh, Airport Authority?
Need to make a motion to keep you. You, you were appointed.
Yeah, but that's what I'm asking, because it would probably correct a lot of things for both you guys and the Tyoka Airport Authority. I'm happy where I'm at, I take pride in that airport, but if it's that big of an issue where the public has completely lost faith in me. As the chairman of the board. I'm not gonna stay on if you guys don't trust me, that's why I come up here and try to talk to you guys as much as I can. Like I said. The work for the airport, cleaning the runways, mowing the grass. That is nothing but trying to make the airport better, when it, when it needs to be done, I do it, I don't sit there. And try to nickel and dime that airport. We run that airport pretty efficiently, I'll give you a perfect example, last year we had a seven, we would have had a seven hundred ninety some thousand dollar shortfall. For this microcell project that would have happened. The authority made the decision to wait one year to see what would happen with the funding mechanisms with the FAA, which. Brett, I, I know you've been attending a lot of the CIP meetings and the, the latest one that we've had down there, Bismarck this last week. You can see that they've, they're funneling a lot of money to the Tyoka Airport. And the state, the state aeronautics commission, they bailed us out. For a, for our seven hundred some thousand dollar, seven hundred ninety some thousand dollar shortfall. We're gonna be on the hook for hundred and, it's a hundred and sixty thousand for that whole project. By just waiting, we are doing our best with every penny that we've got for the public. And for the air, air traffic, or the air flying community. Like I said, I just, if, I, I love that airport, it's been a rough year. I go out to that airport and I burn off steam and try to make that airport as best as I can. And, you know, if, if it's too much trouble, then I don't wanna be troubled for the community, I don't have to be on the airport board. So, if it would alleviate the problems for you guys, cuz I know you guys are catching a lot of trouble. Liz, if you're getting knocks at the, at your personal residence about me.
Knock on the door, certainly people don't come to my home to.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Figuratively, but I, I get phone calls, so.
Williston Grant, the Grown and Article, now I seen us in the Bismarck Tribune, like, it, yeah.
Well, that, that just gives you another reason, so I would say, you know. I'd ask you guys, like I said, you guys didn't appoint me. If you guys wanna keep me, then I'll stay on, if not, then I had a good run.
Jeff, you already have that authority, and again, I don't want the board to breach procedure, you have every right to resign from office. Every right to maintain your office, that's your judgment as a leader.
I'm not gonna resign, I'm just saying as, for the public.
Well, then you've judged that you don't wish to resign, so the commission has no place telling you one way or the other, their options aren't to unappoint people. Their options are limited by.
They have that say though.
No, the commission doesn't have the say to unappoint anyone at a meeting, the commission has the say to dissolve the board. If it becomes persistently problematic, which we hope it does not, which is exactly what I said at the last meeting. But the commission doesn't have a magical wand to unappoint people that prior commissions appointed, that's not within its purview.
Yeah, she was, and that's why I didn't understand the confusion, like, she was pretty easy to understand when she talked about that, but all I heard was. Remove Jeff Mo from the airport board, which she never said, not once.
I never said she did, but I'm just saying, if you dissolve the Tyoka Airport Authority, it would be detrimental to that airport.
That's, I agree.
It's, it would be detrimental to the airport.
There, there should be some board out there handling it, cuz. I don't know the first thing about airports, I know how to manage things, but I don't have the time, to be honest, I'm, I'm swimming in this stuff.
I hear you.
And uh, we. Best thing I can say is I pull a wagon full of mistakes behind me every day, like, it's ridiculous how many mistakes I've made in my life. But I pull them in a wagon to keep them close, so I don't repeat them. And what we're asking for. Since you asked to be here, is we gotta clean up the image badly.
I agree, and that's why I came up here.
We're making the news.
Obviously, I think I muddied myself up, but, I mean, I'm trying, I, I, I mean. I'm trying for myself and I know the Airport Authority has taken actions to clean up the, the image of the airport.
Liz, Liz asked for communication, addressing some of this stuff. So I think. I, I am concerned, I don't wanna keep going back to this, but I am concerned about that records request, I don't know why he has this in the letter, if it was satisfied, or even if it was. Partially satisfied.
Well, what did he say in there towards the end, he said, he wasn't sure of what I meant by submitted the records on the twenty ninth of August. Something of that nature, correct? I don't know why I didn't understand that either.
It is unclear what the authority meant by records were sent eight twenty nine, twenty twenty four at ten AM to city auditor. When it responded to this office inquiries, so if he's not sure, I'm not sure, none of us refer, we just need to make sure.
Hundred percent, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I just. Tried to abide by the notification the best I could, that's. What I was trying to do. I will review that, Liz, I will send you, or anybody that wants a copy of my basin invoices to the Tyoka Airport. Reach out to my email, it's on the city website, jmo@tyokaairportindie.com, I have no problem sending them.
Well, I'm making the request verbally here and I'll clue you in that title forty four oh four allows me to do so, as long as you can clearly understand my request. So just to be clear, and I'll share them with any member of the public who asks, I'm requesting any invoices. Which basin build to the airport and which were paid, and any which you individually build to the airport were paid. And that should allow for complete transparency on that issue.
Hundred percent.
From the time that work started to present, that's my request. Thank you.
Can I send it to your email?
You sure can, that would be even better.
Anything else?
My request has nothing to do with anything other than just classmates talking. Do the social media crap. You know how many people thought that we were dragging you in here because somebody was requesting to have you removed? Because that's exactly what you said, and then. People calling us names in the process, in the comments, I'm like, boy, that could have been like, not even a thing. Don't do it. You know, the League of Cities, they were telling us, and they actually learned it from some, some other auditors that. When you're a public official. What you put on social media, you own, you don't get to delete it, you don't get to block comments, you have to keep that. You see it all over the news, somebody makes a lewd comment on social media, the next thing you know, the barbarians are at the gate with their pitchforks. Just, it's tough, I get it, I don't fully get it because I don't have a Facebook account, but be careful, you know?
Will do.
You guys have any questions for Jeff? Even?
One other thing I was gonna ask you, do you guys have any written complaints to the Tyoka Airport Authority?
I have not got a single written complaint personally.
That was the only thing I was curious about.
Our phone calls.
Yeah, I, I was just curious, and I'm, I'm sorry with short term, Wendy, I just was curious, you know, because I have not received those. And when it came off from that twenty first meeting, Liz, I apologize, but it came off a little hasty and I was getting phone calls about. Desponsoring the airport, and when I read that, or I listened to it. I was a little hot under the collar to begin with, and I'm like, why would they wanna do that? I apologize.
Advice is good, if you're hot under the collar at me, you know, not. Not indirectly, passively, aggressively mentioning me in a Facebook comment and instead picking up a phone. Might avoid some of the dramatics that follow this situation, that would usually be the better course amongst professionals, would be a phone call. If you're really mad, you can write it down, I'll read it.
I tried calling.
I'm aware, on Friday, yep, yep, I know, yep.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, we're on the fire and tornado insurance policy premium, give me a second to pull that up. Alright, so we're renewing our, our insurance policy that'll go till July first, twenty twenty six. The total amount is thirty seven thousand seventy four dollars.
Make a motion to renew the fire and tornado insurance policy premium. For thirty seven thousand seventy four dollars.
I'll second that.
Hey, we got a motion in a second to renew our insurance policy in the amount of thirty seven thousand seventy four dollars, any discussion on that? I wanna talk just, I wanna ask a question, what your guys' thoughts are, cuz I still don't fully understand how this works. It looks like we're insuring a whole lot of park district. Buildings. And I'm sure that we've always done that in the past, but is that something we wanna continue doing?
They could be better if they did, is that what you're asking, or?
I don't know if they've ever been given the option. I don't know if we're doing it just to help them out because extra funds coming in that they don't, and they're offsetting it with taxes. I don't know. Just feel like, uh. It's something we should at least talk about.
Do we hold off on this then? Can we hold off on?
You think Tracy would work with us on that, letting us ponder it for a little bit?
Oh, I mean, I'm sure she would, it, it's always up to your discretion, this policy is dated as of July first, so they're, they are. Somewhat looking for a decision, I wonder more so if the option would be that you change the policy later. And the park district chooses to get their own policy, you can adjust this.
It might be worth asking Tracy if we even have an insurable interest, are we lending the buildings to the parks, or do they actually own those properties? Because if we don't own them, we don't have anything that we can insure, it's not an insurable interest, so I guess I don't totally understand what the ownership.
That's, that was my confusion on it, is my understanding is we've essentially signed over a lot to them, not all of it. But some of it, but yet we're still insuring it, I'm like, how does that work if something was to just. Tornado come by and knock something down, they're gonna be like, you have the policy, but you own the building. Now, I know they'll work with us, I, I know Tappanos will. It's just, I need some clarity because I was looking through the list of all the things that we insure, I'm like, well, it's not even ours.
Prob, I think we'd probably still get the coverage, but then there's the, there's the, why are we paying for something that's not ours, so. But we probably would still get the coverage. If this is dated July first to July first, are we covered right now?
Okay, so do you guys wanna table it then, till next meeting? I'm okay either way.
If we can, if we need to make a decision, then I guess we could always just change later.
Will it remain intact, the coverage until the next meeting? Or do you know?
I guess I would assume I can't say for sure. She, she just wanted it on. This meeting, but I certainly could reach out to her and.
Is that a special meeting?
We're, we're gonna have to do a special meeting for the preliminary budget, right? We can throw that on too.
Oh, I have a motion on the floor still, so shall I resend said motion? I resend, uh, my motion.
Oh, that's it for new business. We're on the, onto the consent agenda. So that would be August fills, payroll for eight seven, pledge holdings and especially that liquor license.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. We got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Alright, this is absolutely gonna be my favorite, probably my least favorite too. We're on to public comment. Anybody have anything they wanna talk about? We're supposed to give you a three minute timer, but we don't have a timer, so.
I'm just wondering if you'll pay my insurance and stuff too.
No.
No, okay.
Anybody? Mr. Stewart?
Can we get a, a number on the payroll for, um, August?
You sure can. Should have had it pulled up for you. Knew you were gonna ask.
I wore my glasses, but wouldn't do any good. I'm too cool.
Oh, where's it at, Wendy? I see, uh, bills.
Yeah, I guess we have it here. So the payroll for this month would be about. Would be. Gross amount is sixty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars eleven cents.
Anybody else? I was not here, so someone's gonna have to fill in for him.
I'll make a motion to, uh. To adjourn.
I'll second that. Alright, we got a motion in a second to adjourn. We'll move to a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Hey, motion carried. We are adjourned at eight thirteen PM.